Dave Friedman coming?
Yes.
Okay, let's, we're gonna wait just a couple minutes. It's always better if we, the more people we have, the better it is, 'cause everybody that doesn't vote sort of counts as a no. So we have to do the phone call thing, we're all here now. Okay. Are you there?
I'm ready. You never be too prepared.
You know. Well, there's rain around.
Hello, this is Alex. Hi Alex, it's Nathan, you're on speakerphone.
Hi Nathan.
And everybody else.
Wonderful.
We're about ready to start.
Sounds good. Hello, everybody.
So I think we should do the village board first, so nobody has to hang around while we go through the formalities with the fence board. So let's call to order and have a roll call for the village board meeting, please.
So for the zoning board meeting, Member Carlson.
Here.
Member Elsasser.
Here.
Member Friedman.
President.
Member Kaplan.
President.
Member Novak.
Member Satter.
Here.
And Chairman Rowan.
Here.
We have a quorum.
That's great. For the first item on business is the June 4 zoning board of appeal meeting minutes, which have been circulated. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or do you want to make a motion to approve the June 4 minutes, which looked okay to me? Is there a second? All in favor? That carries, okay. The next item is a public hearing to consider a request of James, if I get this wrong, Cock, for variations to reduce the rear yard setback and side yard setback for construction of a screened porch addition at 1165 Hofelder Road. Should we swear everybody in all at once?
Yes.
So, anybody who wants to speak on any of the three scheduled items, Nathan's gonna ask you to raise your hand and then say that you're gonna testify truthfully.
If you're going to speak, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will be providing in these matters will be true and complete? Thank you.
Okay. Whoever wants to speak in favor of this variance for the porch, come on up, tell us who you are, and then tell us why we should grant this. And if I got your name wrong, I apologize.
My name is Jim Cash.
Cash, okay.
I live at 1165 Hofelder. I'm requesting the variance, both from the side and from the back of my property. I currently have a deck, and I'm sorry, a patio that is about a third larger than what I'm requesting, which was there when I bought the house. And my, my plan was to remove the patio and make a smaller screened-in porch. I'm here because the house was built, those, the variances were not in existence, and I was unable to, you know, so I'm here to ask you to possibly give me a variance. I, I don't know, do you want me to read these points, or?
We've read them.
Okay.
And if you've been following us, we're kind of a soft touch. And I will, I have a bigger yard, but I had a porch and I had the same problem you do, which is it's impossible with the sun and all that. Everybody knows the secret to living around here is a screened-in porch in the summer. But tell us, I don't want you to prolong this, we've all read this. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cash?
Were there any, any calls or reservations with your neighbors when you approached?
I understand the answer is no. Nathan?
I didn't receive any written or verbal objections, but I did receive calls from a neighbor to the rear with questions.
And, can, tell us, tell us just a little bit about that, just so we-
Just trying to understand the, the scope of what was being requested.
And after you told them?
They didn't give me an opinion.
Okay.
I, I think they might be here this evening, though. Okay. Yes, hello.
Okay. Well, before you, before we vote, we want to hear from the neighbors. So tell us who you are and what, and if you have any issue with this, tell us what it is, and then we'll give Mr. Cash a chance to respond, if he needs to.
My husband and I live at 1150 Oak Ridge Drive. Our backyard is directly in back of 1165 Hofelder Road. Would the board please note that these are small backyards, and the addition asked for in granting of a variance would decrease the privacy so valued in suburban living. We, we have enjoyed living here for 20 years, and have been happy to avoid the congestion and crowdedness of city living. We hope another solution can be found by our neighbor. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I ask, can I ask you a question? Because they, I, you absolutely are entitled to make the point, and your, your point is, your comment is exactly on point in terms of what's at issue, but I have a question about the privacy, because they already had a port, a deck, patio, which was larger.
It's a, it's a small concrete patio.
Right.
And we are, there's another point I didn't make, and we are in a tri-level house, so we have a deck that is higher, too, than their backyard, which would be, I think, a little uncomfortable for people who would have a screened porch, but I just feel that since these yards are really, really tiny, that this is, to build a permanent structure here, could, if it could be avoided, I would appreciate, we would appreciate it. Perhaps there is another solution, like these rollback awnings, or these type of gazebo-type things, that's not quite so in your face.
Okay. Mr. Cash?
I, I talked to all my neighbors including Dr. Fish, and I understand his reservations. Currently, between our houses, there is vegetation, and he is correct that he is higher than we are. And they're talking about privacy, and technically speaking, they can see right into our house right now. Our patio door is at the end of the patio, which is the whole length of the patio, which is about 14 or 16 feet. So technically, we're the ones that are not being, have the privacy. But during the summer, there's plenty of growth between the porch, I mean, between the two houses. The, I did consider the, the things that you said, and I've considered awnings not only for this house, but for my prior house. And one of the problems with awnings are, if, is the wind. The wind, especially if it's when you can draw back and forth, you have to remember to do that all the time. And it really doesn't protect you from the sun, only temporarily, well, part of the day, so it would cut it down somewhat. But as far as privacy, it doesn't change anything. I just felt that the awning, I mean, after investigating it from my old house, it just didn't work, because you had to bring it in and out, it's like doing a, like an umbrella. We also considered an umbrella for that, but it really does, an umbrella only will, you can tilt it, you can do all kinds of things, but it really doesn't cover much of the patio. It's, it has limitations. And the umbrella that you would be able to use, if you wanted really something, is one where it's offset, and then you have always the problem, again, with wind issues, especially if you leave it on. But I do respect your opinion.
Mr. Cash?
No, it is, what, two seasons, two and a half? Just screens?
Okay, and so it-
It can't, no, there's no heat in it, there's no plants, but any, I, I talked to Mr. Parsh, and when we talked about it, I presented all kinds of different ideas, all of them required a build, you know, of, of a variance. Had I wanted an all-year-round room, I understand it's a whole new set of requirements. Where, is that correct?
Not zoning requirements, I'm not sure.
No, but I'm on building requirements.
Yeah, that, that could be.
Yeah.
So, we're talking about a rear yard setback, which is 30 feet, and you want the maximum, which makes it 24 feet.
24. Without that, I think I wrote in there, I would have three and a half feet.
Right, oh, I-
But it isn't, you know, I don't have to repeat what's in there.
Okay. Anybody have questions about this? Let me just say, the philosophy that I've tried to apply, the-
To them, it's within the ordinance and the, the neighbors are fine with it, then we're probably gonna be fine with it.
It's much harder to make an objection, as this one is, which is sort of exactly on point.
Oh, I understand.
Having said that, I don't actually think it's a privacy thing, 'cause, you know, you can actually be closer to them on your current patio than you will be on this screened-in porch. But it's a structure, and, you know, as neighbors, they're, they have a point. You also have a point. So, and I'm, and I'm actually thinking about it, because I, I've had this theory about people objecting, and they almost never object. And sometimes when they object, we can tell it's, you know, as a result of some Hatfield and McCoy feud, and we can discount that.
No, I don't think we-
But that's not the case here. I, I, I get this, this is, this is probably, in terms, straight zone, this is the single hardest thing I've had since I've been on the zoning, but some of them are other issues, but it just in terms of totally legitimate point of view. I mean, you're entitled to ask for a variance, it's within the variance, and you're entitled to object, because you don't want this big thing next to your house. So, what do you folks think?
Excuse me, what?
Yes, ma'am.
How's the board?
Lot sizes, the, the statute provides for a certain setback, and the setback is 30 feet, but there's a 20% variance allowed, and that's, and, you know, typically, we're comfortable that the zoning ordinance and the variance, that even if somebody gets the maximum variance, that that's okay. That's typically what we think. But that's subject to neighbors objecting in good faith, as you have.
I, if you don't mind, I can note two things, just purely for information, based on, just in the spirit of learning and keeping you informed, there is a provision in the zoning code that does allow for a canvas or similar readily movable awning to encroach into a setback, but it does limit the encroachment to 72 inches, which is six feet. So it could only come out six feet from an exterior wall, no more. And then-
Is this, is this like the Stan Schuman exception?
I don't know. There, there's a section of the zoning code in the residential district that lists some items that are permitted encroachments and required yards. And one such item is, is that. It doesn't come up often, but-
He had a temporary carport that he set up in the winter, and he had to get very special dispensation, and I think they tried to accommodate that.
The other item is, I heard something about an option of a gazebo being mentioned. A gazebo is considered an accessory structure, which means it could not be attached to the house. An accessory structure can actually be up to five feet off of a rear-
Side yard setback.
And I have seen people who have proposed, or have built screened gazebos.
Okay.
So you're saying that if the applicant wanted to build a screened porch, five feet off the property line, as an accessory building, would he possibly get permit for that without variance?
As long as it met the five-foot distance from the rear property line and the side yard setback. Yes.
So it would be possible that it followed the neighbors?
It would be, but, but obviously, there, there would be a walk to get to it from the house.
You'd have to walk across the yard, the rear of the property. It wouldn't be attached to the house, but it could be at the rear of the yard, and you could build it there.
Would that be something you would?
Oh, he's, what he's saying is that, he's saying that-
There's a worse option, you were asking for a better option. There's an option that would allow him, it's worse. It's a lot closer.
By the way, the, it's interesting, the house next door, the west side has a large fence, and since you've been, they died on the, the, they sounded like this, but then-
Well, I put that in.
And we put that in.
Yeah.
This in the past, um-
Which I got from-
Okay, so that's the, that yard was open, and the person, the, 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 the whole, whole block is limited, but they put it in. Alright, so, there, that is something that is a little bit of a surprise.
So, the, the village allows for rear yards, a six-foot fence, don't have to get a variance for that.
I guess the, uh, the, the-
It also protects grandchildren.
Right. In gen, in general, the village is sort of negative on fences.
This is a four-foot fence, I had.
But, but, you know, look, whatever is, backyard fence-
I like my neighbor, I like talking to him. I like talking to them, too, when we get in touch.
Um, let me, since no one is, this is really hard, because I have this theory, and this case makes my theory difficult, because everybody's got an important and legitimate point of view. I think, I'm inclined to agree with this, because I'm, I'm sort of weighing these two legitimate interests. I think you'll find it isn't so bad. You, you can't really see the difference between 30 feet and 24 feet. That does not denigrate at all your point of view, which is totally legitimate, and I guess I could be wrong, but I think, in fact, it's not gonna infringe on your life. And I think it's more, um, to infringe on Cash's desire to have a screened-in porch, which is a good thing in Chicago with mosquitoes and sun and what have you. So I'm inclined, but this one isn't easy, I'm inclined to be for it. And, you know, in part, because I think it's not gonna affect, I don't think it's, privacy is not gonna be a problem, it's, they're gonna be further away from your house than the patio that they're now allowed to have. They might be in the porch more often, because the patio's kind of unusable in the evenings, because of the bugs, and it's unusable, and then sometime in the afternoon, because there's too much sun. But I'm inclined, I'm inclined to be for it, with reluctance, because of the well-taken, well-presented, and in totally appropriate objection you've made. Anybody else have a different view on this, or?
No, I, I agree with your comments, I think that when you add in there the setback, three or four feet plus the distance between the rear yard, lot line, and the neighbor's deck, which appears from this area, and if you're looking at it straight on, it'll be hard to have the perception of setbacks. And the fact that it has been a lawful setback, there is, I'm inclined to-
Is there, uh, you wanna say anything? I mean, I, I think we've heard your point.
I have only got other, the baby name is answered. Is this, is there, are there, are there other homes that either side, that, that are, that have those things, have done those kind of variants, or is this sort of a big break in the business of this?
I'm not familiar of, of similar cases in the immediate vicinity, no.
Well, they're, you know-
We just recently, we just recently approved a variance for a-
Yeah, across the street and further north, it was in the 1200 block.
That house backed up to Dunham Road.
No, it, uh, no, it, 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 uh, it didn't have a rectangular backyard, the backyard was, was angled.
Yeah, there's been a couple of those.
We've, you know, just so you know, we've granted plenty of variances for stuff going into the backyard. It's easier to do those, because the distances are, you know, pretty great back there. But we've, yeah, we've, we've done things like this, and I remember, it's not there anymore, but back in the 90s, there was a hu, on Hofelder, there was a huge extension, sort of deck that was built out, and there's no question, the neighbors who were on, you know, the other side could see it, so, it was on, it was on the, it was west, it was instead of going east, but it was west, and we, we do grant these. In general, you know, we don't get a lot of objections, but you're absolutely entitled to make it. I, I, you know, it's always easier when everybody comes in, it leaves happy, and I, I regret where this is going for you, but I, I, we believe, I think, that you're gonna actually be okay with this, that it's not gonna affect your life. My parents lived in Winnetka, and their, their next-door neighbor wanted to build a big house, and needed a variance, and I remember my dad sort of grumbling about it, because, you know, it was really big, I mean, it was big. And after they moved in, it was like, okay, they were okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Carlson.
Yes.
Elsasser.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yeah.
Satter.
Yes.
And Chairman Rowan.
Hi.
Motion approved.
Good luck with your project, and again, I'm, I'm sorry you didn't get what you want this time, but we appreciate the time you spent coming in, and the good faith with which you presented everything.
I hope you're right about the question.
I, you know what, I hope you will tell me if, if we turn out to be wrong, but I'll, I would like to tell us one way or the other, because it'll help us do our job, and if it turns out we're wrong, you have our apology.
Thank you so very much for coming in. Thank you.
The second item tonight is a public hearing to consider a request of Calvin Bernstein on behalf of property owner Chicago Title Land Trust Company, and I'm not reading the number, but you can see it, for variations to reduce the rear yard setback and to increase the maximum gross floor area ratio for construction of additions to the home and detached garage at 655 Sheridan Road. So whoever's making this presentation?
While they're looking, I can start.
Okay.
My name's Calvin Bernstein, I'm the attorney for the, the owner of the property, and we appreciate you hearing this case tonight. I don't know if you went by the house, but this house is located just right near downtown Glencoe. It's about 90 years old, and it's, I did a little research into the architects, who actually are very renowned architects in the area. This house was actually their first commission, so this is the first thing that they ever built in the Chicago area. Then they went on to build Temple Sholem, which is downtown on Lake Shore Drive, they, they built, they, they were the architects on Old Orchard, on Oak Brook Center, the Pickstager Concert Hall down at Northwestern University, Two Prudential Plaza, the Daly Center, where else did I find it? Oh, the Solal Congregation in Highland Park, just to north of us. So, these architects went on to, became very renowned in the area, and, and the owner of the property, who discovered this house, and their first house, actually, their first commission, the first thing they built was this house, and he fell in love with it, and what they're trying to do is, they're trying to update it to 21st century living. The house, I said, is 90 years old, it's a corner lot, based on the zoning code, the, the code has the front yard abutting Hazel, which is directly to the south, however, if you went by the house, the actual- Created some of the situations we're here tonight, because some of the, the area that they want to work in, which is to the north side of the house, is considered the rear yard, even though it functions as a side yard. So I'm gonna call the architect up, she's gonna explain what she wants to do, how she came up with the ideas in order to update this home, and then we're available for any questions you may have.
Has anyone talked to the architect about architecture? Has anybody had the Historic Preservation Commission weigh in on this? I mean, they, they don't, you know, there's no review or anything like that, but part of your pitch was that this is gonna maintain the house as a historic structure.
We, when we submitted, we noted the, the architect, and we noticed, we noted in our letter that it was the first commission, so.
Okay. Objected to this one?
No, I didn't receive any verbal or written objections, nor any questions on this.
Okay.
So you have the drawings, I believe, if you look at the floor plans, and maybe you can go to the PDF, there's a PDF file in this folder, with the drawings. You could go to the second page. So this is the existing first floor, we have a two-car garage on the north side of the house, and to the north of it is a rear yard. We would like to put a mudroom addition and a detached three-car garage behind.
And you can use the, the, for the red dot.
Yeah. So here's the existing- If Nathan could go to, to the pictures, he could show how it looks from the back. And one more, I believe. And one more, I believe. Yeah, so on your right side, this is existing two-car garage and a bedroom above. Sheridan Road is where my pointer is going. So our addition will be behind, completely covered from the street. So we are trying to preserve the existing look as much as we can. Also, maybe if you'll show the site plan. It was the first page on the PDF. So the detached, three-car detached garage will be a- Thing, structure completely, no, this is the one before. Yeah. Here, it will be completely hidden from the street. And what we are trying to do is match the existing design of the current roof. On this garage, I think one of the pictures was pretty, yeah. Here's a view of the detached garage. This is existing mansard roof above the current two-car garage. We are trying to repeat the same design on the new detached garage.
What's driving this request is the fact that trying to match up the roof line with the garage with the existing house because there's a lot of unusable space that's up there that's counting towards FAR. And that's driving the FAR of the entire project. So in addition to the area above the garage, which is not going to be usable, but it counts towards FAR. As Nathan pointed out in the packet and in his staff report, is that there's area inside the house in the attic that's also counted towards FAR. Again, not usable space, but it goes with the ninety-year-old design of the house. So if, in order to keep the house, in order to update the house, but, but to keep the house consistent with the vision of the architects, this was what Natalia came up with. And those are really the two things driving the houses, is the orientation, driving the variance, I should say, is the orientation towards Sheridan Road that this is considered a rear yard and the fact that you have all this unusable space that's quote-unquote attic that's counting towards the FAR.
So the existing garage, the stage.
Yes.
And then this addition, is it going to be detached from the garage?
Yes, yes, it's detached to the-
The addition is attached. We can see it on the floor plan. But the garage is detached.
Okay.
The new three-car garage is detached.
Okay.
Is there more of an addition on the first floor or the other side of the house?
Yes, so we, yeah, there is an addition in the back on the southeast part of the house. We're making the living room deeper. Right now, this living room is seventeen feet, extremely long. We're making it deeper.
So we're trying to make that more usable, trying to update it. Again, this one, this was designed ninety years ago, it was a very narrow- Into the, that's actually considered a front yard, actually, because that's going back. That's creating more living space.
A big part of the problem here is that you have a corner. And so you have a side yard, which is treated as a front yard. So you have to meet the fifty-foot front yard setback.
I will note that on Hazel, I drove by it tonight, and there's a wall on Hazel. So you can't really barely see the house when you're driving down Hazel. And that's operating as a side yard.
Is there an illustration of where the setback is?
Yes, actually, on this one. Here.
Under the rear yard?
This dash line.
Oh, it's that six-foot line, it's that six-foot line.
Yeah, six feet into the rear. And again, the existing garage is already approached.
It's already that component.
So the, where the garage is now, that's- Hazel is in the back.
Chase is to the right. Yeah, that's Hazel. And there's new construction directly to the north. It's under construction right now.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I have one more question. Where did you say the wall is now?
The wall is on the lot line, all the way to the south of the property along Hazel. And that really encloses that area to make it, makes the front yard look like a rear yard. Because that's where the, that's how the house was oriented.
There's the wall.
And it's actually turning. But this is our addition. The addition is behind the existing.
Seems okay to me. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Carlson.
Yes.
Elsa Surr.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yeah.
Satter.
Yes.
Rowan.
Aye. Good luck with your project. And we appreciate that you're willing to go the extra mile to have your addition look like the initial house.
I'm glad that you're actually keeping the house.
The next planned item is a public hearing to consider a request of Raven Passavento to reduce the front yard setback for construction of a master bedroom addition at 636 Washington Place. Tell us who you are and why you think we should do this.
My name is Chuck Reister from Brendan Reister Architects, Twenty North Rackard Drive, Chicago, Illinois. I'm Marsha here, the owners, and Chris Rudolph is associate architect from Christopher Rudolph Architects, Chicago. The proposed eight-hundred-and-forty-seven square foot addition is situated at the northwest end of the property. It is located at 636 Washington Place in Glencoe, Illinois. The residence is not conforming corner lot with the front of the house facing the corner side yard. The front yard setbacks are applied to both the north and the south lot frontages. The bulk of the existing residence is situated towards the south of the property. The proposed new addition will provide a pleasing streetscape along Washington Avenue and further enhance the first-rate status of Glencoe. Existing building is one-story U-shaped in plan, creating a west-facing courtyard. The building has a concrete base, masonry facades. The basement, the house has a basement, it calls basement. This will extend underneath the new addition. The new addition is low-slope roofs that will match the existing roof heights and slopes. All sides of the tract of addition are architecturally detailed, aesthetically pleasing, and match the existing house. Extending, aligning the new proposed addition with the existing wall extends into the front yard setback by three feet and approximately twenty feet long. It will not extend across the whole fifty-foot setback, but just a portion of it. We think that extending it, aligning it with existing wall is the appropriate thing to do. We could have added on for the master bedroom if we didn't think a two-story addition would be appropriate. We're trying to make sure that addition seamlessly added on to the existing structure.
Can you explain here what you mean by the courtyard?
It's a U-shaped house.
Okay.
And it faces, the courtyard faces to the west. So we're actually adding on to the courtyard just a little bit. And they just, you know, want an updated lifestyle with a master bedroom suite.
The Washington Place is private street?
It formally was. Yeah. Within the last year or two years, it was, went through a process to be dedicated. And that included an upgrade to the street, the dedication of right-of-way, and- The whole nine yards.
It's a new piece of property.
I think, I think the, probably the second eleven-by-seventeen attachment is the most helpful in understanding what they're requesting. It's the site plan. And you can see that there's just sort of a narrow triangular area that is going to be encroaching beyond. That's the extent of their request.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't think, nobody's complained. I don't- We're living there, who will like it better. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Let's have a roll call.
All right. Carlson.
Yes.
Elsa Surr.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Satter.
Yes.
And Chairman Rowan.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with your project. Are you new to Glencoe? Welcome to Glencoe.
We're happy to have you.
I'm looking, no, you guys are, you've done great. You're done. You're welcome to stay. This is public comment time, but I've determined that there won't be anybody in the public to comment. Anybody want to say anything that's not part of our regular minutes or regular meeting?
I do.
Okay. Oh, well. Well, congratulations. Must have been a pretty high-powered class. So I think there's no public comment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can't leave yet, can't leave yet. We have, let's call the, call to order the fence board meeting. And we'll have to have a roll call.
Member Carlson.
Here.
Member Elsa Surr. Friedman.
Here.
Member Kaplan.
Here.
Member Satter.
Here.
And Chairman Rowan.
The agenda is the June Ford 2018 Fence Board of Appeals meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments or is there a motion to approve them? Is there a second? Thank you. Nobody's here to comment. Is there a motion to adjourn? I haven't. I've talked to Larry about it, but I haven't done it. I've been trying, in part because I haven't figured out exactly how I want it done. And I'll raise this, and, you know, I just, I should do it, maybe dump it in there, let they can figure it out. So in general, we want to be able, I think, because it helps us, you know, ninety-eight percent of the time, but unfortunately not with the one thing we had today, which is too bad. But it is approve variances that are within what's allowed. Because we're sort of confident in the zoning code with the variance. On the other hand, I feel very differently about fences because I don't think fences are an emergency. I don't think anybody's life really is affected by fences. So if we put in a maximum fence, I don't want to have it the same rule, you know, a maximum variance allowed, twenty percent, ten percent, you know, one foot, whatever we say. I don't want the same presumption. I want a different presumption. And I regret that I've not figured out. I've talked to Larry about it and maybe, maybe I should just write something and let them worry about it. I don't want to interfere with the program we have for regular requests. Because I think we have a pretty good thing going. At the same time, I hate the damn fences. Have we voted on the? We need, do we have it have like a voice vote?
For, well, you approved the minutes, so.
For adjourn, yeah.
Nope, just a motion to adjourn.
It's our motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank, thank you everyone for coming on a lovely summer.
The next meeting is, and we will have a meeting in September, just so you know, it's September tenth.
Monday afternoon.
Yes, correct.
I may not be here. I think-